In partnership with parents in the community, Birmingham Public Schools will provide educational excellence that empowers students to cultivate their individual brilliance and positively impact the world.
Evening and welcome. Today is December 17th and this is the meeting of the Board of Education and it is our last meeting of the school year. So, welcome everyone. Our first order of business is roll call. Tracy?
Trustee Ashaluni.
Present.
Trustee Holkemer.
Here.
Trustee Joseph.
Here.
Trustee McKitty. Trustee Rass.
Here.
Trustee Spencer.
Here.
Trustee Sammet.
Here.
Thank you Tracy. Trustee Joseph, will you please read our vision and board norms this evening?
Gladly, thank you. Our vision is that all students in Birmingham will realize their full potential, think critically, and champion an innovative tomorrow.
Thank you. And our board norms?
Board norms. Be respectful and reflective. Be prepared. No surprises. Ask questions and seek to understand opinions. Assume positive intent. Understand and respect the role of a trustee.
Thank you trustee Joseph. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Roberson for tonight's recognitions.
Good evening. It's always great to end the calendar year with recognitions. I would like to invite the principal of West Maple, Mr. Jason Pesamoska, up to the podium and I want him to talk about the West Maple Empathy Project. Oh, that's not it.
I can't do audit results, I'm sorry guys. I apologize.
Is it already on the desktop for you? Tracy, did you?
Just load it up. It's on the down over.
The one on the right.
Got it. Alright.
Good, right there.
That's right there.
Alright. Well, thank you, Dr. Roberson. I'm actually going to turn it over to our West Maple teachers who are going to present on the empathy project. So come on over.
Hi, I'm Madeline Partham. I'm a first grade teacher at West Maple and this project is between the first grade team and the fourth grade team. And it started about eight years ago and has kind of looked differently over the years, but the main goal has been to help students use empathy and compassion to understand the plight of individuals around the world and propose possible solutions. This project's really centered in empathy and compassion and using those skills to be change makers in our world. So some of our learning targets are understanding what empathy and compassion are, doing research, proposing solutions to the world problems, and using different modes of communication to share their learning. These are the curriculum areas that are covered. So we cover a lot of reading, writing, and social studies standards. And you'll see up there the competency that's listed as citizenship. The project is linked to the work of Michael Fulon and his team with New Pedagogy for Deep Learning and his call to action is for education to be a catalyst for change. And so, one of, he has a series of six words that start with the letter C, one of them is citizenship. And that's about empowering students with knowledge and social emotional skills to make a positive impact and change in the world.
Hi, I'm Cara Frye and I teach fourth grade at West Maple. So for the first part of the year from September through December, the first and fourth grades have met about one to two times per month and our focus has been on the topic of food scarcity. So students have learned through picture books, through some short videos, what terms like poverty and scarcity mean. They do a few different activities to solidify that understanding. So they look through like food grocery flyers and they have, are given a certain amount of money that they have to budget and so they understand how much food costs and how, you know, what you might have to give up, the opportunity cost for, you know, if you need to buy milk or basics versus things you may want. They also, the fourth graders went to Oakland Hope, which is a food bank in Pontiac this fall where they volunteered and helped do some shopping for people who came to the food bank. And so they really were able to see firsthand how that works and they really enjoyed it. Many of them said it was their favorite field trip. Parents said they are so glad that their kids were able to do that. I had a student that reenacted the whole thing at home with her family and they said, you know, a lot of them said, "This is something we need to do more of as a family." So that was great. The first graders in turn did a snack drive where they raised, or had families bring in snacks that they then donated to the same food bank. And then within the building, we've been talking about food waste. So like with breakfast, when you get your food, if there's something that you don't open or decide you don't want, what can you do with that instead of just throwing it away or throwing it in your locker? So they take it to the office and then if kids need a snack, they forgot one, they can also go and get a snack there. So we're thinking, really thinking about, what are we doing with the food we have? How do we not waste it? How can we help others?
The second part of the year, or the next third of the year, we work on water pollution and its effect on both animals and humans. We do a water pollution demonstration. We put candy wrappers and oil and different, and paint in water and we ask the kids to figure out what it is that's polluting that water and how it would affect animals and the water. Again, we look at more books, websites, and videos. The best part of this section is we get to go to the zoo and the fourth and the first graders go to the zoo together. They do a program on how the environment affects the, a certain type of frog and they learn about how the environment affects the frogs and its ability to live.
That's Shannon Peters, fourth grade teacher.
Fourth grade. I thought you all knew me, so.
I'm Lauren Lambert. I'm also a fourth grade teacher. And so at the very end of this project, typically around April, students choose the topic that resonates with them the most, whether it is food scarcity, or water pollution and animals, or water pollution and humans. And they choose that topic to come up with a prototype that serves a purpose. It's a solution to that issue and they spend lots of time, they work so hard, they develop an actual 3D model of their prototype. And at the end of the year, they have an empathy museum where parents get to come. We set up in the cafeteria in the gym and parents get to walk around and see all their models and hear their speeches about their prototypes.
That is the coolest thing I've ever heard, an empathy museum.
My name is Liz Jokai. I teach first grade at West Maple and here is a video showing what our...
One more click over.
Oh, showing what our students learned about empathy last year.
West Maple versus first and fourth graders proudly present to you.
Liz, that's a great voice. You got to point to it. JC, JC's got it.
West Maple versus first and fourth graders proudly present to you. On 2023 and 2024, and it's not counted. JC, first and fourth graders are working together to create a unique project founded on empathy. The goal of this project was to demonstrate how all of you have earned in our lives and are worthy of justice.
What is empathy? Understanding how one another feels.
Putting yourself in someone else's problems, like understanding what they're feeling.
If they're by violence and feelings and they're trying to make them feel better.
Creating new life.
Time is to tell you something about someone other than you.
So I'd just like to wrap it up real quick and say one more thing. I'm sorry, Dr. Roberson. So I've had two students at West Maple, my daughter is seventh grade at Berkshire, she's gone through this as a student, and now my son this year. So I actually got to sneak away to Oakland Hope this year. I text Cory and let him know I was leaving for the day to go on a field trip and it was so incredibly impactful for the kids, for all the adults that were there. So if you haven't gone there, you actually shop for items. And so the kids understood, like, they get one can of corn, one can of beans. The size of the meat they get is dependent on the size of the family. So it was like real kids seeing what families survive on, maybe for that week in between. It was really impactful and they were actually doing it. They got to shop and then there was treats at the end that might be pop or candy that they got to pick out to put in the carts. And then I was a loader of the car, so I got to go and load all the things in the car. They had cat and dog food for, you know, families that needed it. So it truly was incredible impactful and this is our eighth year doing it. So we've been able to visit many different places and locations and help out in our local community. I just want to thank our first and fourth grade teams because they are incredible and put the time and effort into this year upon year upon year and keep making it better. So thank you.
Incredible program. What a topic, empathy. I mean, I'm just like, chills. I have chills thinking of the impact it has on our little kids and what it does for them growing up.
This is wonderful, honestly. Thank you for doing what you do.
Will you let us know when the empathy museum is open so we can come?
Absolutely, yeah. It'll be sometime in May, probably towards the end of May, but yeah, we can certainly send a date for you.
Come and check it out.
We love that, yeah.
Awesome.
Can we have a picture with you guys?
Of course, yeah.
You're the only one in front.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Pes, don't go anywhere. It is with great pride and excitement that we recognize an outstanding educator who has gone above and beyond for his students, school, and community. Jason Pesamoska, principal of West Maple Elementary School, has been honored with the prestigious Excellence in Education Award from the Michigan Lottery. This award celebrates exceptional public school educators across Michigan who embody excellence, dedication, inspiration, leadership, and effectiveness in education. Mr. Pesamoska, affectionately known as Mr. Pes by his students, has been recognized for creating an environment where every student feels safe, valued, and respected. His tireless leadership and ability to build meaningful relationships have truly made a lasting impact on his school community. Nominated by a parent, Mr. Pes was described as a principal who knows every kid's name in the school and ensures every child feels loved and respected while fostering a sense of safety and belonging. His dedication and his, to his students, staff, and families is inspiring and extraordinary, and his contributions reflect the best of what education can offer. Mr. Pes, who has served as an educator for 17 years and has led West Maple Elementary for the past seven, embodies the true spirit of this award. We extend our heartfelt congratulations to him on his well-deserved recognition and celebrate his unwavering commitment to shaping the future of our children. I will also have to say that I don't believe that they have ever given this award to a principal. It usually goes to a teacher. So this is truly amazing.
Thank you so much, Dr. Roberson. I'm not good at taking personal awards. I'd rather accept them for our school and all the work they do. This, this award, I actually, I was hoping Board Member McKinney was here. When I got elected principal, I remember her making a side comment and she may or may not remember it, and she was excited about my drive and my passion then, when I was presented as principal of West Maple. And I've held firm to that all the way through. It is about every child, every day, but also as a principal, it's about every teacher, every day. And how are we, every teacher, every para, every secretary, how are we working together to meet all of their needs? And I cannot do the work I do every day without just an incredible staff. So I am very blessed to have the very best at West Maple and, and great families. And if you did take a minute, there was a second video, I actually sent it out to our families, where the lottery commissioner interviews you and she made me break. And by making me break, she said, you know, "What did it take to get here?" Birmingham is an extremely high achieving district and I could have never dreamed of being a principal here, but my wife, early on, sacrificed a lot with young kids to allow me to attend every event, to allow me to position myself and work really hard. So this goes out to her and all she did for me to help us and our family get to this point and to all of my staff at West Maple. I love you all and I'm just thankful to, to have this opportunity every day. Can I get a picture with the boss?
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations to your wife as well.
And we have still yet another recognition. If I can have JL, Mr. Lawson come up, as well as Mr. Neerman and the Groves debate team, can have you come up to the podium. This is a very accomplished team and I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over and allow them to talk about their achievements so far.
Okay. I have been coaching at Groves since 1989 and even after I retired officially in 2012, I've been coaching debate and assisting with the forensic team as well. And we have a wonderful staff of coaches. Ryan Neerman, co-director of debate, and Brad Maloche, who is the assistant coach, and both of them are graduates of Groves High School. They both debated not only in college, but at Groves High School. And they were debate partners during Ryan's senior and Brad's junior year in, at Groves. The debaters we have representing us, we have three folks and we have Annabella Shibell, who is our freshman on the team. And the novices were third place at the state tournament last weekend at Wayne State. Vishwa and Charlissa and our varsity, Carl isn't here for some reason, he said he'd be here, but is not, you know, placed first. And they were undefeated in, with a 4-0 record in prelims and a 3-0 decision of the judges in the final round against Ochamas High School. But that's not the only tournament they worked for. They've traveled around the country. They've traveled in Michigan regionally and nationally. And our next semester will be devoted to getting our second bid, we already have one, to the National Tournament of Champions, which we attended for the first time in many years last April, held every year at the University of Kentucky in Lexington. I think this is a team that has gone in many, many different directions in their arguments. Some rather traditional, some rather untraditional, and they've had wonderful success as they've traveled. As the new year comes around, they will be traveling to Nashville and Lexington, Massachusetts, and hopefully their debating will be the equivalent of the shot heard around the world. And then they'll be on some online tournaments, perhaps at Stanford. That's only online, that's only online. And then a couple more online appearances. And there'll be some other opportunities and hopefully the Tournament of Champions as well as Groves 10th state championship in varsity debate. And so I'd like to recognize them for their work and their success as they, in Vishwa's case, moves on to the university level next year where he may well debate. And our others who have a few more years. So this is a junior and Annabella has three more years. She's a freshman. And so we've had a wonderful year so far and we hope it continues in our second semester of debate. Okay.
So, first of all, I'd really appreciate the Birmingham resources. You know, the Michigan debate circuit as a whole, it doesn't really have a presence on the national circuit. And for the first time since 2017, we've been able to bring this team to the Tournament of Champions, which is the national tournament and the top 80 teams in the nation. This year, we were able to get 10th in the nation, my partner Carl and I, all because of the resources we have at this district. And it's really unique because if you think about it, Groves, out of every other high school in the whole, in the whole of Michigan, was the only one to qualify for this prestigious tournament, right? And it's because Groves has those resources. We have JL, we have Ryan, we have Brad, and we have the massive amount of, like, for example, we have the resources to go to camp that many other people can't afford. We have the financial resources, we have the determination of the students. And it would be like, it would be impossible if, for me and Carl, and Carl isn't here, I know unfortunately, but it would be really impossible for us if we never had the supporting staff. And I really, really appreciate this district a lot.
Congratulations.
And we would invite any member of the board or the central administration staff to attend our tournaments, especially those that are done online from Groves. Mrs. Ammett has attended and she came back for a second day with her husband, who briefly debated for Groves in the early 1990s and wanted to say hello. Yes. Well, he swam and did a lot of polo, okay. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
One more thing to note is that one partner, Charlisa, was a middle school state champion two, three years ago at Covington. And then the Covington program sort of disappeared. And she took it on as her mission to revive the program.
Bravo.
And this year, Covington in the middle school division placed second. They lost in the final round on a 2-1 decision. And one of their students is actually a sixth grader. So they have a great future ahead of them.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we look forward to having them back at the end of the, their second semester season. And that concludes the recognitions for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Roberson.
Thank you.
Trustees, are there any additions or deletion to tonight's agenda?
Yes, actually, I would like to bring up a, an addition. I'd like to move the business service resolution forward after our consent agenda. And I'd like to look for a motion to move that forward. Yeah, I guess I am. So I'm going to make the motion to move that forward and then I guess I would like some support if you agree.
Support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so moved by Lori, seconded by Amy, to move Business Services after our voting of our consent agenda. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you, Vice President Ash Looney. Next, we will move into our superintendent's report.
Sure. So I will start with the report. This would be Trustee McKinney's last board meeting. Unfortunately, she cannot be here this evening. We do wish her well, and we look forward to honoring her at the January board meeting. I have a few updates now that fall season sports are finished. I know I shared some at our last study session, but again, wanted to just share for the, for the public as well. We had our Seehome Boys tennis, tennis team, which were state runner-ups, and we had one individual and two double teams who won state titles. Our Seehome Boys water polo was sixth at states. Our Groves football were regional champions, and our Groves Boys tennis were co-regional champions with Seehome, who ended up placing in the state championship. We've had a number of community engagement opportunities. We did have our State of the District address a couple of weeks ago. If you have not had an opportunity to see it, it is on YouTube. I want to give a shout out to Groves Choir and also the Groves Theater for doing a vignette at the State of the District address. I always also want to give a shout out to Groves Choir and the Seehome Orchestra for performing at the Rotary Club during their holiday event. I've had the opportunity also to, as some of you know, I do coffee and conversation with the community, I do soup with the soup with our staff, and so out of our Student Ambassadors program, they called me out for not doing something for the students, and so now I, I do cookies and conversations with students. So I had the opportunity to go to Groves, Seehome, and also Lincoln Street, had a lot of great conversation about their needs at their school, but there was a common thread among all three schools around advisory and how to make advisory better. And so I know that our Student Ambassadors in January will be talking a bit more about advisory and just giving some, perhaps some recommendations, recommendations and suggestions of what they would like to see. And one of our big focuses this year is really increasing student voice, because our students are the ones who experience the decisions that we as adults make, and so it's really important that we do all that we can to make sure that we're hearing from those who are impacted. We have also our Winter Market, which is the Adult Transitions Program, selling handcrafted items here at the EAC, is still underway. You have three days, so if you have holiday items that you need to purchase, come on by tomorrow between 10:00 and 12:30, or Thursday and Friday between 9:00 and 11:00, and you will see students from our adult transition programs and items that they made themselves, and they will be selling those to, to the public.
Trustee Amet, can I just call you up? Did you get these from the?
I didn't.
Oh, I thought, it looked like something that they just, yeah.
It could be, right?
That was a perfect segue to go shop.
Also, this week, there was a survey that went out to our older students, middle seventh through twelfth grade, and that survey, parents had an option to opt out, but it was from the Birmingham Bloofville Coalition, and we needed, that survey, the purpose of that survey is to help guide their youth action board that focuses on drug and alcohol prevention for adolescents, as well as mental health and wellness support for our community. It also allows them to continue to get grant money to help fund that youth action board, which is comprised of Birmingham and Bloofville Hills students. So for those of you who received, if you're, if you saw the email that went out to parents about that survey, that's what that survey was concerning. Lastly, for my report, I am asking that the board approve a resolution for the next senior center to continue in their agreement to stay at Midville for an additional year. As many of you know, the next, for half of our Midville Center is half early childhood, the other half is occupied by the senior group next, and they, we have an agreement for them to move into their own space in the end of June of 2026. Because they are renovating a new building, they need an additional year, and so they have asked for an extension. We are able to give them an 11-month extension, not a full year, and the only reason that it is not a full year is because we do plan on doing some renovation there so that we can house more four-year-old and three-year-old programs in that center. And so I am asking, because you did approve for them to be in that space until June of 2026, if you would extend that agreement until May of 2027.
I move that we approve Resolution 33, acceptance of the First Amendment of Building Use Agreement between BPS and Birmingham Area Senior, what does that say, Courting Council? Okay, just next to next.
I support.
Moved by Amy, supported by Trustee Joseph. Trustees, any other questions? All those in favor of approving Resolution 33, the next building use agreement, the First Amendment, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, and I just, as we end the calendar year, I just want to wish all the families a Happy New Year, because the next time we will see them, it will be 2025. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Roberson. Tracy, do we have any public comments? Seeing none. Trustees, do we have any board comments this evening?
I have two quick things.
Okay.
I did have the opportunity to attend the State of the District, and I would just like to thank Dr. Roberson. She did an amazing job, and I had the privilege of sitting at a table with some, you know, lions of our community, including Dr. Hoffler, who was there, and they all said to me afterwards, you are very lucky to have Dr. Roberson as your superintendent, which of course, I wholeheartedly already agreed with, but it was nice to hear it from them, and she did an amazing job, and it, is it still available?
It's still available.
If you would like to watch it on the recording. And then the only other thing I would like to quickly say is I'd like to thank our community because schools offer support, hosted their Season of Giving, which provides support for families within our district boundaries who are in need, and we raised more than $29,000, helped 75 families and more than 200, I think it was 295 individuals within those families. And this is a huge undertaking, but more importantly, the generosity of our community makes it possible for many families to continue to celebrate this season in the manner in which they are accustomed. So, thank you.
Trustee Joseph?
Thank you. I couldn't attend the State of the District, but I watched it livestream. It was, as usual, Dr. Mika does a good job, obviously, there was a lot of good information. I encouraged everyone to watch it and just to see what this district did and what we have to offer. And the other thing, I just want to reflect on a wonderful 2024. It was an amazing calendar year, because we're still in the school year, technically. So the years definitely go by quick, and we look forward to 2025, welcoming a new trustee and seeing, obviously, today we're saying goodbye to Trustee McKinney, so we wish her definitely the best, and we'll reflect more in January. And honestly, there's a couple, you know, Trustee Amy and Dr. Mika, this year lost some family members, I want to lift those in prayers, and the first year after their loss, you never forget that. But in the happiness moment, I also wish everybody a wonderful Christmas, a safe with their families, and a wonderful and happy New Year, and try not to eat too much.
Thank you, Trustee Joseph.
Do you know, I also want to say, this is a beautiful time of year. It is a time for us to reflect on what has been past, and it's also a time for us to look forward for what is to come. So I'm wishing everyone during this holiday season, love and light, and I send prayers out to the universe for peace on earth.
Amen.
Thank you, Vice President Ash Looney. I, of course, have my plug for BEF and BYA. The dog show, or I'm sorry, the bash, on a bash bash, is February 1st, so tickets are now available. I know that our past president, Kim Whitman, is in charge of the wine pool, so if anyone would like to donate wine to the BEF or any silent auction items, we would greatly appreciate it. That's the district fundraiser that goes directly all back to our schools and students, so we appreciate that support. And then the following morning is the Birmingham Youth Assistance Dog Show at Berkshire, and this is our 46th year for the dog show, if I believe, for Birmingham Youth Assistance, so it's been going on for a very long time. So mark your calendar for the first weekend in February. And I just wanted to thank, as we end this year, it's been an honor to serve with each of you as presidents, so I want to thank the Board of Trustees and the CLT team for your support this year as my, finish this year as president, so I appreciate it very much. Seeing that we have no other board comment, we will move into our consent agenda. That includes our personnel report, financial statements, in minutes from our November/December meeting. So could I have a motion to consider Resolution 34, our consent agenda? I'm going to consider Resolution 34, acceptance of the consent agenda. Move by Colleen, seconded by Nicole. Any questions, trustees? All those in favor of approving Resolution 34, the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And at this time, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Terratuda for Resolution, for the Business Services Report, so that would be our quarterly dashboard, the audit results, Resolution 37 and 38.
Is there any issue with the trustees to go slightly out of order from this, just because all of the construction activity can be lumped together, or do you, do we prefer to stay in order?
However you want to do it.
Okay, then I will invite our financial audit team up first. Sorry, dude. To go over the results of the financial statement audit.
Wonderful, thank you.
Cover the most exciting stuff first. That's what I was looking for, thank you. All right. Well, thank you for having us tonight. My name's Chris, and with me tonight is Quentin from Plant Moran, to present our results of our audits for the year ended June 30 of 2024, which consists of your audit of your financial statements, which includes your general fund, all of your other funds at the district, your special revenue funds, debt service fund, and capital project funds, as well as your disclosures to your financial statements. And happy to report tonight, we've issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest form of assurance an auditor can provide on a set of financial statements, so a clean opinion, highest mark on that audit. From a federal program or a single audit perspective, on an annual basis, we have to rotate in compliance with federal regulations, which federal programs that we test. And this year, those programs were the federally funded Child Nutrition Cluster, so it's not the state dollars, but that's the federal portion of the Food Service Program, and Special Education, or IDEA. And happy to report tonight as well that we issued an unmodified opinion on both of those programs, all the dollars were spent in compliance with federal regulations. So all around, clean audits, and we have some slides to share some of the financial figures, primarily for the general fund, which I'll turn over to Quentin, and happy to take any questions throughout or at the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this first slide is the governmental funds balance sheet at June 30th. So at year end, this is a snapshot of the assets, liabilities, and fund balance of all of the major funds presented in their own columns, and then all of the non-major funds presented together in one column. So as you can see, your major funds this year were the general fund, always as major, the 2024 Building Insight Bond Fund, the 2023 Building Insight Bond Fund, and then the debt service fund, which services the debt on those bonds. And then again, all the non-major funds presented in one column. So the primary focus on this slide is the classification of fund balance that we wanted to present. So you can see, starting with the general fund, 830,000 was considered non-spendable. That was really prepaid costs, so if it's already been spent, by nature, it's non-spendable. The 3 million, sorry, I should have said, these are all presented in thousands, so the 3 million of assigned fund balance for general fund is the use of next year's fund balance in that original budget. So if we budgeted in the original budget a 3 million use of funds, that's going to be assigned here. And then the remainder of the general fund fund balance, 14.5 million, is unassigned. The bond funds are legally restricted, and so that's why all of their fund balance is in that restricted column, and the same thing with the debt service fund. Its fund balance is legally restricted to be used for servicing that debt. So this next slide is presenting the same funds, all the major funds on their own, and then the non-major combined, this time the income statement, so your revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Nothing really to hone in too, too far on here, but as, as a result of the year's operations, the general fund had a reduction in fund balance of 1.1 million. The 2024 bond fund had an increase of 48 million, that was the result of the bond proceeds. The 2023 bond had a reduction of fund balance of 29.95 million, spending those funds for capital projects, and then the debt service had an increase of 1.3 million in fund balance. The net result of all the non-major funds together was a reduction of 739,000. So this slide and the remainder of our slides will be focused on the general fund, as it is the primary operating fund of the district. So this one is the budget to actual results at a very high level. Again, this is not going to be a surprise information, I know you've all been presented these budgets, but really, the key takeaway here is that the final actual, or the final budget and the actual were very close. You can see an overall variance in that change of fund balance of just 72,000, which compared to the total dollars running through those funds is actually very, very close. Now presenting the general fund revenue by its source. So there's two buckets here that are really state funding, but we have them presented distinctly. So there's the state funding from foundation allowance and the overall state allocations, and then specifically, 9% of the overall revenue was state restricted retirement funding, so that's your 147(c)(1) money. Local and transfers made up 41% of general fund funding, and then federal was 3.9 million. That 3.9 million is really the focus of our grants audit that Chris presented the results This slide is now just a recap of the overall COVID dollars, so this is a slide we've been presenting since 2020, if you can believe it, but the, the key takeaway here is that as of June 30th of 2024, all of those allocations are now spent. So that money has been finished with.
Yeah, I just wanted to break down a little bit in more detail here, the general fund revenue. So this is looking at the impact of the foundation allowance, which is what the district receives on a per pupil basis. And the foundation allowance here at Birmingham represents 65% And the foundation allowance here at Birmingham represents 65% of the total revenue in the general fund. So that's made up of a few different sources, too. Birmingham is a hold harmless district, and you can see the breakdown in the left-hand corner of the slide here. On a per pupil basis, for 2024, the district received 13,363 dollars per student, and that's from a few different funding sources. So 3,755 dollars per student is the hold harmless millage on the homestead properties within the district. 3,700 dollars per student is the non-homestead property tax amount that was received per student, with the balance just over 5,900 being received in state dollars to round out the grand total of just over 13.3 thousand dollars per student. So again, just highlighting here the impact of the importance of the foundation allowance and how much of a resource that is, 65% of the total revenue in the general fund. The number of students is important, obviously, because that is a portion of the equation, number of students multiplied by the foundation allowance to get to that total foundation allowance revenue for the general fund. And this graph is really just highlighting the change in that student count, that blended enrollment figure from 2012 through 2024. So, you know, this declining trend, this would be a common trend that you would see at really most districts across the state of Michigan, and really nationwide, as the state, or as the nationwide population continues to age, we have less students going in, or less of a student age population. And so, you know, we really do see this trend, not only in Michigan, but nationwide. But you can see a little bright spot here, in, you know, 2023 and going into 2024, there was an increase in enrollment, going from 7,233 to 7,314 in 2024. And looking at your state aid status report for fiscal year 2025, it looks like those figures are a little bit higher even than 2024. So you are starting to kind of buck that trend and actually have a slight increase each year in the student count here at Birmingham, which is great.
Back to the general fund for just a couple of slides. So this is presenting the total expenditures broken out by its function. This is a required presentation by the state of Michigan and by GASB federal standards. So this is really, I like to think about, what did we spend the money for? And so, as you can see, 79.8% of the general fund expenditures were for instruction and instructional support, which is typically what we expect to see vast majority of those general fund expenditures for. Nothing really to dive into deep here. Overall, the breakout between the different functions was highly consistent with prior years, which we tend to see. So this next slide is the same totals for the general fund, but instead of presenting by function, what we spent the money for, this is presented by object, so what did we spend the money on? And similar story, salaries and benefits combined are 83% of the general fund expenditures for the year. Again, highly typical for a K-12 district to spend most of its general fund money on salaries and benefits. And again, consistent overall breakout from prior years. So this is a 10-year trend of retirement expense from the general fund. So for 2024 fiscal year, that total of 37 million is kind of broken out between the MIPSers expense of the district and the UAAL, the 147(c) amount, which was 13.9, almost 14 million for the year. So that's really just a turnaround, get the money from the state, turn around and put that into ORS. Only thing to note here is that that 2023 amount of almost 20 million looks unusually high. That was that one-time additional 147(c)(2) remittance from the state that was, again, turned around and put right back into ORS. So it's a revenue and an expense.
Yeah, and last slide, just wanted to highlight the fund balance in the general fund. So fund balances in the state of Michigan, their overall health is often measured as a percentage of your general fund expenditures. So if we look at your total fund balance again at June 30 of 2024, just under 18.4 million dollars. The total operating expenditures were just over 150.7 million, so that ratio would be 12.2%, which would be pretty much right in the middle of that district stated goal of 10 to 15% fund balance as a target. So right, right within that range. Just another point of reference, you know, there's an early warning measurement of about 5%. So if you get that low, you know, there are additional reporting requirements for a district, once you get to that level of fund balance. Treasury has a greater oversight over the district, and there's several early reporting requirements that districts have to comply with. So that's just another data point in terms of monitoring your fund balance. But again, that 12.2% right within the range of the district goal. So that's all the prepared slides we have. Want to also, you know, thank administration and the business office for their help in completing the audit. It's a lot of additional work that they have on top of their day-to-day responsibilities. And, you know, frankly, every year, there's either a new audit standard or a new federal requirement that we have to comply with for the audit that just adds that much more work. So appreciate all their help and cooperation in allowing us to complete the audit. Thank you.
Thank you, our audit, our audit team on the board. Thank you very much for your work on that.
Yeah, I want to thank you, thank the Plant Moran and the team. You know, being in the industry, I was in a comment, I understand how much work you guys have to do and how much digging, so I appreciate that. I mean, we get this result, but only God knows how many hours you put into it, but we don't want to know it, to be honest.
Trustees, are there any questions? Thank you, Donald.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we will have Plant Moran Real Point presenting the quarterly dashboard on our construction projects.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
There you go. All right. First, I would like to thank the board for having us here tonight. I would also like to thank everyone for all the approvals you have already given us to proceed with next summer's work, 2025, as you'll see here in a few minutes. Will be a pretty busy period for us, but we do appreciate all your support so far. We do have a couple more approvals that will be coming your way early in the January timeframe, but after that, we should be smooth sailing through the end of summer of 2025. So without further ado, I will present our December 2024 dashboard. As you can see, on the top left is kind of the breakdown of 195 million dollar budget. As we have stated in the past, the bond is more than just construction. There is FFNE, which stands for furniture fixtures and equipment throughout the schools, buses, technology, security, and then the design prime work is kind of projects that we're doing with, with some design partners, not necessarily with our CMs of Rockford and Barton Mall builds. So it just, it's a different way of looking at some projects. We do some roofing and some paving with that kind of work. Those numbers really haven't changed through, through the beginning of the bond. You will see to the right, kind of our, our funding allocation graph. You will notice that that, the budget is a little higher than what is on the left of the 195, we are at 198. And the footnotes kind of explain that, just some of the earned interest that we've gotten through your investments on the bond helped raise that budget up. Since we were here last in September, with your guys' approval, we have increased our commitments in construction by 13.2 million dollars. So that's, again, future work that you guys have approved, and we are already making good strides on that. FFNE has gone up 104,000 dollars. Again, just commitments that we did between last, last September when we were here and now. Buses kind of remain the same. Technology, we've increased by 1.4 million dollars. And design prime work, a lot of that stuff was just approved at the last meeting, it's 1.7 million increase. So overall, our commitments were increased like 16.5 million from the last time we were in front presenting, and then the actuals approved kind of went up around 13 million dollars. So you'll notice the third to the right, there is the reserve and owner contingency that's just over 2 million dollars. That is a nice, healthy amount for the work we have going forward. Obviously, as we review and evaluate projects going forward, there are some expectancies that some of that contingency will be used on some of the upcoming projects, but it's nice to have that in, in the books right now. The pie graphs in the middle kind of just show the committed versus budget based on those categories up above. Those have pretty, remain consistent throughout. As I mentioned earlier on, 2025 is going to be a busy year for us. We're going to do a lot of stuff over the summer, like we always do, but there's some stuff that, you know, we're going to, we're going to partake in that won't affect students or anything like that, that we can try to get done, you know, before the summer rush. One of that being like the Midvale chiller, some of the, the salt barn storage facilities at, at maintenance and the fire alarm, that stuff can happen, you know. And then obviously, most of those projects, the board has already seen and approved. Again, we thank you for that, but it's, it's going to be a busy one. We're going to be doing a couple parking lots, a couple roof works throughout the district, some additions, some renovations, and it's, it's going to be a fun one. So we appreciate it again. To the left, you'll see kind of our upcoming projects and in, currently in design and planning. We had some very good meetings last week with our elementary staff and administration at, at the four elementaries, Beverly, Greenfield, Harlan, and Pembroke. So we're already starting the planning for the summer of 2026, which seems crazy, but it takes time to, you know, get the scopes of work right. And then probably in the fall, we will start working with our roofing consultants on the Derby, Pierce, Corton, and West Maple roofs. So we have a little bit more time on, on those projects. Included in this report, I wanted to kind of give you some pictures from our last dashboard of some completed stuff. As you know, we did finish, and we presented to you guys in September, we had a great summer before that, so there was a lot of completion photos there. This is just stuff that, you know, just might not have been finished at that time of the report, and some of the stuff that we're already starting on. We got some nice new graphics at BCS, Birmingham Covington School, and the gym. The locker rooms and the pool have finished, and it was nice to see students swimming in it the other day when I took these pictures, so we're, we're happy about that. New wall graphics in the pool as well. Right here, you'll see the new chiller on the roof at Midvale. They still have some piping to do underneath, but that's going along. These are some new stairs we added to the Sea Home Baseball Stadium off of Midvale. And then the hallway going past the main office at Sea Home, got that new flooring done. The food, the life skills lab was, was actually, they were cooking some food when I took the picture. So I tried to get, I tried to get a clean picture, but that's, that's what we got. And then next to that, these yellow containers that is right outside here, those are our underground stormwater detention system that we pushed ahead, so we can hopefully get, give back those parking lot spaces, especially on a night like tonight, here shortly. And then, you know, the new auditorium sign in front of the Groves, and then just kind of a fun one, right? And Bingham Farms, we have our construction trailer delivered to the site, so we can, that will be the start of things to come over at Bingham Farms. And as always, we have kind of our completed projects of what we, what we've done throughout the years on the left. So I will open it up to any questions or anything you guys have.
I love that auditorium sign in front of Groves. Fantastic, very classy. And the hallway at Sea Home, beautiful.
Yeah, it really turned out nice.
Nice job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, David, for the update. They will, Plant Moran Real Point will stay nearby, because we have two resolutions now to present to the board. First resolution is 37, move management at Bingham Farms and Corton. So as they alluded to, we will be doing work at Bingham Farms and Corton this summer, which requires the move of various equipment and items within the buildings. We did put this out to bid. We received five bids for that work, and the lowest bidders were interviewed by the project team, making sure that they understood the full scope and their costs were complete. With satisfaction of those interviews, they now become the recommended bid award for move management, and that group is professional movers. So the total cost of the bid award, 57,420 dollars. A construction contingency is added for any unexpected costs that may arise throughout their work of 20,000 for a total bid award of 77,420. This did go to the bond oversight committee last week for further details and questions.
Thank you.
I move that we consider resolution number 37 award for BP move management at Bingham Farms and Corton.
Moved by trustee Hokumer, seconded by trustee Joseph. Trustees, any questions? All those in favor of passing resolution 37, the move management of Bingham Farms and Corton, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. The next resolution is 38, award for paving improvements at Pembroke Elementary. So very same process, the parking lot and associated asphalt concrete areas around the building, including the play pad in the playground area, were all signed to this bid package. Same process, we received five bids and reviewed the lowest responsible billers for scope and adherence to the full project. The lowest responsible bidder award was going to asphalt specialists for a total package of 835,392 dollars and 75 cents. So with that, again, did go to the bond oversight committee last week for full scope review, clarification, and questions.
I move to consider resolution 38, award for paving improvements at Pembroke Elementary. Support.
Moved, excuse me, moved by trustees Emmett, support by trustee Spencer. Any questions, trustees? All those in favor of passing, passing resolution 38, award of paving improvements at Pembroke, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful holiday, yes. Thank you.
Hey, yeah, thank, thanks again, appreciate it. Hope everybody has a great holiday, and to you guys' point, gets a little bit of time with family and friends. Thank you. We'll see you in January.
Thank you.
Now I will turn it over to Mr. Heitch for the deputy superintendent updates.
Good evening. I have two resolutions. Our first resolution, resolution number 35, is to consider and amend Board Bylaw 1002, which pertains to meetings of the Board of Education. Current Bylaw 1002 states that addresses meetings of the Board of Education, and it states that the Michigan Open Meetings Act governs many aspects of the Board of Education meetings, and these bylaws supplement the requirements of the Open Meetings Act. Currently, that bylaw does not address board meeting minutes and retention of open and closed session minutes. So the amendment that we're proposing would address that. I would like to read for the record what the amendment would add to 1002. So minutes of the preceding meeting shall be approved by the board as its next, at its next regular meeting. Open session meeting minutes and closed session meeting minutes shall be kept in the office of the Board of Education. Open session minutes shall be kept separately from closed session minutes. Closed session minutes shall be kept in a special locked file in the office of Board, of the Board of Education. Open meeting minutes and closed meeting minutes shall be retained until the district is dissolved. Open meeting minutes only shall then be transferred to the Archives of Michigan. Closed meeting minutes shall not be transferred to the Archives of Michigan and destroyed if the district is dissolved, consistent with the law and discretion of the Board of Education. Closed session minutes shall not be available to the public and shall only be disclosed, disclosed as allowed by law. So be it resolved that this resolution amending Board Bylaw 1002 shall take effect immediately upon passage in accordance with the procedures which are specified in Board Bylaw 1003 stated above in the last whereas of this resolution.
Thank you.
Mr. Heitch? I would like to, I know that we have a requirement to review this twice. So normally, we would have this set, but because the board has all reviewed it, and I would like to assume we're all in agreement that this is a reasonable change. I would like to assume we're all in agreement that this is a reasonable change, I would like to consider that we waive our policy for a second reading and vote on this tonight.
Support. So moved by trustee Hokumer to waive the first reading of our resolution, supported by, second reading, I'm sorry, second reading, supported by trustee Egluney. Although, or any questions? All those in favor of waiving the second, second reading? Please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Then I'm going to move to consider resolution thirty-five, where we consider and amend the Board Bylaw 1002.
Support. Moved by trustee Egluney, supported by trustee Joseph. Trustees, any questions? All those in favor of resolution thirty-five to consider and amend Board Bylaw 1002, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have before you Board Resolution Number Thirty-Six, which deals with our acceptance of the emergency operation plans. Last week during our closed session, we had an opportunity to, to review, and also an opportunity for any individual board member that wanted to continue to look and explore what is inside those emergency operation plans to, to come and do so. The emergency operation plans are required by state law. They are to be reviewed biannually and approved biannually by boards of education. Our last biannual review was part of Board of Education Resolution Two Forty-seven in December twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-one, so we are up for that biannual review this, this evening. So I am asking for approval of this resolution for acceptance of our biannual review of the emergency operation plan.
I move that we consider resolution thirty-six, acceptance of emergency operation plans.
Support.
Moved by trustee Hokumer, seconded by trustee Zammatt. Any questions, trustees? All those in favor of resolution thirty-six, the acceptance of the emergency operating plans, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That goes on record quickly. Trustees, is there anything else before we adjourn?
No. Can I just say, I know Christmas was mentioned, I just want to say, for everyone, whatever you celebrate, Christmas, Hanukkah, Kwanzaa, Bodhi, I hope I said that correctly, or if you don't celebrate anything at all, we, we wish you the best over the next two weeks during the winter break.
Thank you.
I just want to also touch upon something you said and remind me to mention, how lucky we are as trustees to work with each and every single member of the CLT and the other, my other trustees here. It's an amazing team, and honestly, we're so lucky and blessed to be in this district with these wonderful people.
Thank you, trustee Joseph. And with that, Happy New Year, we will see everyone in January, and meeting adjourned at eight oh nine.